The Board of Commissioners like to welcome each of you tonight to our meeting. Have a long meeting, but stay with us, we get you out sometime tonight. But we want to welcome each of you to come to our meeting and share it with us to see what it is that we do, which your tax dollars and how local government work. Again, we're really glad to have each of you and especially our young people. Let's give them a hand, thank them for being in the house tonight. You know, folks, believe it or not, one of these days you will be us, because we get some age on us. But thank you for coming. And all our elected officials tonight, thank y'all for coming and sharing with us in this greater meeting. At this time, you can go to the pledge and invocation by Vice Chair, Mr. Harris Allen.
We have some special guests, Hope County Commissioners. But first, I would like to get the Chairman of the School Board, Mr. Catherine Blue, to lead us in our prayer. And I have a special young lady who's going to lead us in our pledge. Ms. Blue?
Let it spill ahead. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our life, health, and strength. We ask, Lord, that you come into this meeting and have your way. Bless everyone that's here. God, let us make decisions, Lord. God, that we pleasing in your sight. Bless every commissioner, every person that's in this room. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I want to recognize our young lady by the name of Madison Cooper. She's going to come up from Sandy Grove Middle School and lead us in our pledge. We want to join you, Madison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, all Commissioners, all for our pledge and invocation. Thank you so much for that. Again, we say welcome to all our elected officials and to all of you and all of our guests tonight. Thank you for coming. Before we get started, I must share this with you, using the greatest county in the state of North Carolina tonight. Thank you for being here. All right, read to adopt. Now, have a motion to adopt. A second?
Second.
Motion second to adopt. All right, time to sit on for the one. Aye. Poes, I have it. Thank you. Need a motion to approve amendments on A and B items, November 3rd and November 17th.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second? Motion second of approve our minutes for November 3rd and for November 17th. All right, time to sit on for the one. Aye. All poes, men approve. Is great on that, you going to do this, Megan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Megan, I turn this port to your hand.
Thank you, Chairman Leach. It's now time for the Board to elect the Chair and Vice Chair for the upcoming year. The Board can now accept nominations for the Chair.
Madam Attorney, I nominate James Leach as our Chair.
Make a motion, nominations come to a close.
A second motion.
Nominations are now closed. Our Chairman is Mr. James Leach.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman Leach, I turn it back over to you. Okay. The Board can now entertain nominations for the Vice Chair.
I nominate Mr. Harris Allen, Vice Chair.
Make a motion, nominations come to a close.
A second that motion.
We have Commissioner Harry Sutherland for the Vice Chair.
Did anybody talk about raise, Tony?
No, actually, they said there was going to be a decrease.
Why did you tell me before that?
I didn't want you to back out.
You probably meant that to thank each of you, we do our best. That's all we can do to serve you well, fair and equal, and no raise, we do best we can. Thank you for coming. Thank you. All righty, Mr. Attorney, we have, Mrs. Attorney, we have public comment at this time.
Do you want to just read what the name is?
Get the list. Get the list. Do you get the list from up there?
Yes.
Oh, you got, okay, good.
I have Ms. Kathy Lomans. Williandra, sorry. Williandra.
Portuguese, Portuguese.
My neighbor, have mercy.
I know. We're trying to petition to get him out, but we can't.
Just keep voting for him, he'll be out. Keep voting for him.
I'm going to quit voting for you pretty soon.
Oh, you're going to get run out of town.
You'll get with it. And you don't know what a politician I can be. You see this book?
Yes.
You see what the picture is?
No.
Well, you can't see good enough to be the Commissioner President, Ben.
Now, can you see that? You can't see good enough, I bring that up here to me.
Don't take my minutes away, because he's slow.
She got it on front page, Alan.
Someone, someone made that book for me and had it sent to me. Now, the inside has pictures from Facebook that I guess I posted, but someone sent me that and had that cover made. So that should tell you that I'm not the only one that's wondering why it will be fifteen months, December the 7th, since I stood up there and that stupid picture was made.
Hey, that's too much.
Okay, well, nothing's happened from it. I've got another picture that he can put on, I don't know what happened to him, he was going to put up. Okay, that's today. Looks exactly like last month's, does it not? Those are dogs in cages outside with their little huts, because there's not enough room for them inside. You've got a wonderful staff. I don't know where any of y'all saw the dog's Thanksgiving dinner that the staff and the community out there presented. It looked a heck of a lot better than my Thanksgiving table. And those dogs were eating turn by turn, because they're so kind. And Christie and her staff gave up their time to be with the things they take care of. And I don't know how much we appreciate that, but I know that those animals, plus the black cat that I'm having to watch every night, that someone threw in my yard a few weeks ago, needs a home, but there's no place. I'm not going to take him out there so they can kill him right away, because I have no place to put him. I want to know, last month, y'all promised me that you would look into it, so I want to know what's happened. It's been fifteen months. Fifteen months. And I don't know, somebody told me I should talk to the committee. Who is the committee? Who's looking into it? Which one of you, can you tell me which one of y'all looked into it?
All of us.
What did they say?
He's here right behind you.
Representative.
I'm glad to see him. Well, you tell them, fifteen months. And I supported, I have supported you all, and I've supported J. and K. in this community, which is hard to do sometimes. If you all, any of y'all read Facebook or anything else, you know, it's kind of hard to, to say, hey, leave the Commissioners alone, or let's give them a chance, or leave J. and K. alone, he's doing a lot for our community, he's a businessman. I do that. But this redhead's turning eighty, and it's natural red, and it's fixing to become flaming red, because these animals went through the whole hot summer, and now they're going through a cold winter. J. and K. builds beautiful buildings. I've asked for one of those big, pretty chandeliers, I think it'd be nice for the staff, because he's gorgeous. His buildings are gorgeous. But that mud trap out there with some pillars is not. We got to get busy, and I hold you all responsible, because you all give money to lots of organizations. I'm here at every meeting, I know. You know, some of the people we need to recognize are some of our county people that do the work.
Forty seconds, Ms. Kathy.
I know. So, I knew she would calm me down, but y'all need to give us more time.
Yeah, he's always fine, Ms. Lian.
So please, please look into that and speak with this young man, and also look into your employees that are down here that don't get awards all the time, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they need things too. They're doing the work of Hope County, and they're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can keep my files, I just keep records on y'all.
Mr. Chairman, me and the County Manager got in touch with J. and K. today, and they allowed Mr. Cody Nerrod to come and speak and give us an update, a comprehensive update on what's going on with the animal shelter. While he's coming up, I will tell you that J. and K. just finished the Tyler Town Fire Department, and they donated at first five hundred thousand dollars, but it ended up being five hundred and eighty thousand. They just got their CO Certificate of Occupancy about a week or two ago, so they just finished that project for us. And now they're working on another project where they're donating, I think, an estimation of about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cody.
Good evening, and thank you for bringing up your concerns.
I do it every month.
Yeah. Ask them. Yeah, we completely understand your concerns. So with the process, as you just showed, we have, we do have our slab found, formed up and ready to go. The reason some of these things do take so long is the permitting process. You know, we can all complain about all we want, but everyone's got a job to do, it's there for a reason, and sometimes it takes longer than expected. So that is one of the things that has held it up a bit. But we do, we are expecting to get our inspections done this week or next week. That way, we can go ahead and get that concrete slab and foundation poured for it. Once we get those inspections done, we're looking at probably another one to two week turnaround on actually pouring the concrete. But that won't make a huge difference right now, because our main holdup is the material for that building. There were some delays with the company, and we're looking at probably February or March before the materials will even get delivered. So even if we poured it tomorrow, it's not going to be until probably springtime before those materials get in.
What type of material? When you say material?
Just all the materials for the building, the metal, the, the.
The metal building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Then once we have all the materials in place, we're probably another three months or so.
Tell me, steel building, ordering the steel?
The metal building. The metal building. Yes, sir. And to my, to the best of my understanding, they had previously ordered it to try to get it lined up to where the, it would arrive when the permits were ready. But because the permits weren't done when we expected them to be done, which it happens, it's construction, they did get delayed. When we went back to reorder the steel, they were pushed back a little bit farther, and there were some concerns that we may change up the building size and stuff like that too. So a combination of the permits and not knowing exactly what we were going to do at that time did kind of push it back a little bit, but we are still working on it.
And do you remember the cost, Harry, you probably did, the cost of the money they're going to donate was two hundred and eighty thousand?
I believe it was two hundred originally, but I think it, it did go over that.
It went over that, I can't remember the exact, but it did, went, went over.
Yes, sir. And Jamal was fine.
And he's donating that money?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. A time, in label.
Yes, sir. But that's, that's all I got for you at the moment. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
So are we saying, if we would just throw a timeline out there and be conservative about it, are we saying somewhere the building may be able to be occupied by June, or?
Yes, sir. That's, that's our goal. Hopefully, we can come under, you know, beat that goal. But again, we're trying to be conservative, so that's kind of what it's looking like right now. Again, if we pour the slab tomorrow, we won't have the material until.
So you do that pouring the slab pretty soon?
Yes, sir. As soon as we get the, we pass our, our inspection for the slab, we'll be getting it on the schedule for the, the port.
Any more question? And the 280 don't include the part that the county going add, because we going, after y'all finish getting to the 280, we agree to also put some local dollars with it, so you probably looking at over three hundred thousand dollars building for the animals when we get to that point.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I don't have the exact budget in front of me at the moment, but, sir.
Is, is there, is, is there a possibility of maybe talking to another company about the metal building? Because this one has been delayed to February, March. So is there a way to get another building from another company? Have y'all looked into that yet?
It's, it's possible. I know they were kind of looking into it. The company that we're using is typically, to my understanding, we've used them quite a bit in the past, and they are reliable. And again, we're, that's kind of worst case scenario, we're trying to push them to get it done quicker.
Okay.
But I'd rather, you know, give you kind of worst case scenario, and then we.
They didn't give us a date and don't meet it, because if you give us a date and you don't meet that, we right back again.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Can we ask questions?
To him.
Yes, when did you ask for the inspections? Because this has been fifteen months, and I was at a meeting where one of your men told me that the very latest of that year was going to be March. And I get it buildings inspected all the time, I own businesses also. It's never taken me fifteen months to get a building inspected, and it was the same time you did the police station or the fire station.
She can ask after the meeting. She talks to him after the meeting. Yeah.
I don't quite understand.
Back and forth.
We all love our people, but we, everybody in this county loves their animals also. And so I know inspections don't usually take fifteen months to get, and especially if it was applied for as early as they said it was. And then also, I'd like to know when that was done, and when was materials ordered? Because you, I, I go, I know how much your buildings, because I go around and look and make notes, you know? And so when was materials ordered that you can't get them for this specific thing, but you can get them for everything else?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, if you could get those answers for me, I'll have them checked in.
And, and, and he's spending, he can do that after the meeting, because he's spending private money, this is out of his pocket, so by him spending it out of his own pocket is not the counted dollar he's using, using his personal dollars.
Money out of my pocket. We all spend money out of each other's pockets.
So, so, but he, he's spending.
I appreciate what they were going to do and what you're doing, but I also think that it can be done in a real time, or else say, when you do it, it's going to take five years or two years.
Yeah. He can address those after the meeting, but do what you can, spend your private dollars, and if you can speed it, be all well and good. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Anyone else? Megan?
No, sir.
Okay.
Public.
That's it? All right. Let's go to public hearing. What's Jackie?
Somewhere, yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a case number twenty, issue twenty-five dash two. Applicant is Audrey Gillespie. The property is owned by Ms. Gillespie, and the parcel number is three eight four nine four zero 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 one zero zero eight. This is a family cemetery that she's requesting. Family cemeteries are permitted, are permitted within RA twenty with a special use. The cemetery will be for the immediate family. The dedicated area within the parcel will be fenced in, or trees or shrubs and natural vegetation will be used as a border. The adjacent properties included and the surrounding is residential dwellings, agricultural fields, and wooded tracks. And the access will be provided by a thirty-foot easement in which she has had done on her preliminary plot. I think you have a copy of that in your information. And then there was the section about all the requirements that we put forth. She, she provided the maintenance agreement. She, she had her survey done, and so she just waiting to get the final approval on the request before she gets her plot recorded.
So the half acre Jackie has already been surveyed?
Yes, sir.
Could you point it out to us?
Yeah.
That's, that little box, is that the?
The little, where the small box is, that's where Ms. Audrey lives.
She lived there.
Yeah, and she owns that eighteen acre tract right beside there, to her left.
Around it.
Yeah, right there.
All is in the green.
Yes. So she cut out an acre behind her house and then cut it in half.
Okay.
For the, for the cemetery, so it's going to be kind of toward the back part of the property. She's going to be, let's see, I think it's, it's um, thirty, fifty feet from any wells. There's no wells in that area to be worried about. I did speak to the property owner on the right side. He had some concerns at first, and then, you know, he was thinking it may have been a church cemetery instead of a family cemetery. But I think Ms., I think I saw Ms. Audrey. Oh, okay. She's here tonight, if you have any questions.
Okay. Public comment? Anyone that's wish to comment, public is open, public comment. Yeah.
My name is Annie Davis.
She's going to have to swear, you answer it, huh?
Oh.
Actually, well.
Just, you can raise your right hand for me. Do you swear that, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give the Commissioners today be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you guys?
Yes, I will.
Okay, you may proceed.
What a map that I have.
What was your name, one more time?
Annie Davis. Now, where her home is at is on a one track, along with the seventeen acres, but it don't indicate where it's been marked off to put no grave, family grave.
Okay.
You can say you're going to do this and that, but it's not shown on the map.
Okay.
Because you can approve it, and they can put it anywhere they want to put it.
Yeah. Show us Jackie the, the survey spot on that map, what's been cut out.
So this is the map here.
I can't see it.
It's going to be, this is, there was an acre cut out here, and so the cemetery's going to be somewhere in this area, right through here. She has a thirty-foot access easement that's going to be recorded on her preliminary map to show her access off of Turnpike Road to the cemetery right here.
Because running to V, there's not much more you can do in the back, back there.
Can you show them that?
Yeah.
Let, let her see it.
Let her see it. Yeah, sure, yeah, let her see it.
This is her, is this little white, right? And this was a one acre tract.
Her son back there comes, my friend, have a look at that map.
When did this take?
Come, yeah.
I got this map.
Have a look at it. Move eyes.
When we came down here, none of that was indicated.
That's when I come back.
This was the meeting at the planning board. The night of the planning board meeting, this was the map that was presented.
So, so Jackie, when would it be so that Mr. Ms. Davis can see it, like?
Well, you won't change on there until the re-map is recorded.
And that's what, that's our concern is, that we're, we're, we don't have, we're just saying things. We don't have nothing definite.
No, I mean, we can't, she's on, she won't get her final or her map recorded unless she's going to have a family cemetery.
Well, if she had it de-accept, tell me, this should be already recorded, and, and so you know where it's at.
We have to prove first.
We, it has to be approved by this board before it can be recorded. Yes, ma'am.
But it been surveyed already?
Yes, sir.
So when, if this board approve, then she have to record that at courthouse? Arrangement, I'm sorry. It will be recorded if it's approved?
If it's, yeah, and she can, she will get a deep-looking page number the same day the map is recorded. Now, it won't show on her GIS system for a while, but, but this map will be in registered deeds.
Okay, right, okay, and that, behind, behind the house there?
Yeah, it's going to be behind, it's over here, on this side.
Half acres right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Being, being recorded, okay.
And it's going to, going to be if it's.
Yeah.
And that's touching, Flute McMillan, Jay Flute McMillan next to her.
This gentleman that owns his property, he came in and he had some concerns. He was thinking it was going to be a church cemetery, and.
Yeah, we did too.
But it's a family cemetery.
So it's not a church cemetery?
And how many, how many plots or burial sites at that family cemetery?
That's totally up to the applicant.
But it's a half acre.
Half an acre. They have quite a few out there, but, but that's what we require is a half an acre for a cemetery, for a family cemetery.
It's a requirement, a half acre.
Yeah, that's what our ordinance requires.
There, there already graves on the property, if I remember correctly?
Not this one.
There's some back there somewhere, yeah.
This is a different, this is a different.
That won't be next, no.
Yeah. Gotcha.
There's graves already on property?
This one's, like I said, Ms. Audrey's here. She can answer any questions if I have also.
I have a question for her.
Mr. Audrey?
She need to get sworn to.
That's where you end?
If we finish with this one.
Did Ms. Annie have any more questions?
Let her first say what she might have to say, you might have some.
Well, I was just concerned about the, the cemetery and stuff. And we were told, well, it's eighteen acres, but that's still justifying about where this cemetery was. They saying where it going to be is it actually going to happen.
You want to exceed the survey?
Yeah.
Exact, for corns where it's going?
Yes.
Where you know it's going there?
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, Ms. Annie, the way of the work, if we approve this, uh, if we approve this tonight, then they will move forward with recording that map as it's been presented to us. If they record something different than what we have in our files, then we can come back and we can have recourse against it, okay? Yeah, we, we have a way, if they, if they change that, and we know that they went out there and say laid out five acres or something, we'd have a way of seeing that, okay?
Okay, okay.
And what are you saying, you don't wanna look out the door into it?
Right, cause I'm seventy-one, ninety-four, and she's seventy-one, ninety-five, so she read it in front of me.
Right now, can you see it? You probably can't see it right, can you see it?
But she don't know where it is.
You don't know where it is?
I don't know where it is.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
I have a question for me.
Miss, miss, what name is it?
Ms. Audrey?
Ms. Audrey?
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're providing to the board today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Audrey, uh, my concern is that, um, say if you, you, you pass away, and I don't know if you got enough money to keep maintaining it.
I have family members to maintain it, I'll have any of my things in here back there.
Because that's gonna be a concern.
Yes.
You know, uh, if you got, say, on a half acre lot, you got fifteen.
It's not gonna be that many, just eight people.
Right, well, that's what we're saying, I understand that, but until we have something more definite.
Right.
It could be twelve, it could be fourteen, and you won't have to come back before us, cause we, we have already approved it.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure that, that it's maintained. They got, they gotta be, they gotta be maintained.
It's gonna be maintained.
Okay.
And that's what you have in your application, that you only plan on having eight?
Well, I didn't say eight.
Right.
The specific, I just said a family cemetery.
I got you, I got you.
And, and pull the map again, Chris, so you're saying to us, basically, this is gonna be the location?
Yes sir.
Behind that?
It sits here.
Mm-hmm.
And the cemetery will be back in the woods, you won't even be able to see it from the road, because I have trees up and I'm gonna keep a tree line there.
So they won't be able to see it?
And I'm gonna put a fence there.
Okay.
Okay.
As you're, you don't have it surveyed, they're gonna have it.
Yes sir, I had everything surveyed, I just gotta wait until it gets approved before I can get the deed and all the other stuff going.
Until she can see the four corners?
Yes.
Okay, I understand what they're saying, that this didn't want, we prove it and you's able to browse over it.
Yes.
And that's what they're saying, they don't wanna come out the back door, front door, side door, and be able to look right into it. Ms. Annie, you understand that, no more question?
Ms., Ms. Chairman, could I make a suggestion to Jackie?
Yes sir.
Jackie, could we just make sure that we follow this and once it's recorded and everything, that we pull a copy of the recorded and let Ms. Annie, um, know? So she'll have a copy of exactly where it's gonna be at? Yeah, is that good, Ms. Annie?
Yes sir.
Okay.
That's good with you? Ask your son, permission?
You, you gotta be sworn in.
He's gonna, he's gonna testify.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, it won't go into the record. Okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay, and Ms. Jackie gonna file it through?
I'm gonna get our telephone number.
She'll file it through for you.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Public hearing still open, anybody else wish to speak against it or for it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that's second close public hearing? Second. The motion second public hearing be closed, all right, time to sit off it with I?
Aye.
Pose, I have it, wish of the board.
I make a motion that it be approved based on what we're talking about.
Based on the following through with Jackie and everything?
Yes.
Second. All right, I don't have time to sit off it with I?
Aye.
Pose, okay, make sure they follow through with it, okay? All right, Ms. Megan? Next one, Ms. Jackie?
Ms. Jackie, if I could just affirm you as well. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're providing to the commissioners today shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes ma'am. Um, this case, this case number issue twenty-five dash three, the applicant is Jarrett Sampson, uh, with Stackit, Stackit Storage. Um, the property owner currently is Ray Elizabeth Jones, the parcel number is four nine four seven five zero three zero one zero one zero. And it's a thirty acre tract. The applicant is requesting approval for a special use permit to allow us storage buildings on the above referenced property. Storage buildings require special use in RA twenty district. Uh, the property is surrounded by a lot of residential dis, area, and then there's some highway commercial off to the side also. Um, the storage buildings will be located in a designated area that complies with setback and buffering. There will be, access will be provided from off of the state road, which is Rockfish Road. And all, all required permits will be obtained, buffering must be installed along the residential property lines. Uh, Mr. Jarrett Sampson is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. You should have a copy of the, his proposal in your packet.
Okay.
But Mr. Sampson is here.
Swear in.
Lou.
Hello, do you swear that, swear or affirm that the testimony that you're providing to the board of commissioners tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, it is. Hello, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How y'all doing?
Good.
So we have proposed a mini storage facility over here off of Rockfish Road. It's a two-phase project, basically the front portion of the property, if you look at the front portion over here, there's, there's a transmission line running through it. So the property for all intents purposes is not very developable for much other than mini storages, but as you see in the layout, we're gonna do roughly around two hundred units in the front section with, uh, development in the back section, if those were to fill up and do well, is kind of the proposal that we have on the docket at first. There will be a office building at the very front of Rockfish Road, I know there was some concerns about water and things of that nature. We just need one office for an employee there, so we need one bathroom, so just one water meter on that, so that come up in the zoning meeting, where there would, there would be much need for water. Um, but that is the only need for that out there. Then the transmission line, there will be, under the transmission line, you can have temporary parking and things of that nature, but you have to have a, um, fifty foot on each side of it. And we've designed the mini storages to accommodate that.
I was doing my search with transmission line, nothing else you can do with it?
No, there's nothing else you can do with it.
Yeah. Alrighty, public hearing, anyone else have any comments, come up? Come up, mm-hmm, you have to be sworn in.
Yes sir.
Mm-hmm.
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes ma'am.
Do, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're providing to the board tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely. Okay, the, the map.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, are we on the property over the top? These little, this thing is gonna literally be in my front yard. We have a beautiful home, beautiful home, and we've worked and hard and we own it now, and now I'm gonna have a mini storage in my front yard. Which, you know, I'm all about innovation and all about capitalism, and I'm, I wanna be a friend. Obviously, we're gonna be neighbors, it's pretty much that this is a go. But our question is, okay, you're gonna put a slab, submit slab up there, our property goes down a hill. You're gonna flood us out, are you gonna do something about that?
Um, no, there, you have to meet all, the engineer will come out, we have to do all the erosion, and if you look over here on the map, there's actually retention ponds that has to be done.
Yeah, yeah, they're there already, there's one by the school.
Yeah, so there will be all of this, I don't wanna flood out people's mini storages either.
Well, that's, that, you won't, because you're up on a hill, we're, when you go straight, you literally, our house is down.
Yeah.
If you didn't know.
It sits on, yeah, it sits on a hill.
Sits on a little hill, and then it goes down to our beautiful pond, and our beautiful, beautiful little bit of heaven, that's now gonna have a mini storage in my front yard. Okay, so, you're gonna put shrubs around this thing where I can't see a bit of it?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna see any of it.
I don't know whether you're gonna sit or not, you may get up on top of the house and look down in there.
I don't care about that. If I'm sitting on my front porch, or we're having company.
You'll see some nice shrubs and everything there, and you'll say, there's some beautiful mini storages, I met the nicest young man that did it.
Well, I do, I do agree, you are a very nice young man, and I do appreciate that, cause we are gonna be neighbors, and I don't wanna have a peace.
But yes, but all this will be aesthetically pleasing to the eye.
Okay.
And our goal being is that you don't see any of the mini storages from the, that. But, you know, like I said, um, at other sites, I mean, really, you can't see them from the back. Cause we're doing one over in Cumberland County right now, and it's same deal, where you have a, you have a, um, subdivision right over here to the property, so it's been done like that. That's the goal, and it's gonna meet all of your code and requirements and all of the things like that.
Okay, you promise that.
If you get on your porch, and you can see them mini storages, when they're through with everything, and you ain't got the shrub up, you just come back and let the county manager know, and we'll have him back up here. How about that? Alright.
Sounds good to me, I appreciate that.
Thank you. We better sell some metal to the junkyard. We sell some metal to the junkyard.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright, anybody else public hearing?
How y'all doing?
Good evening.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're providing to the board tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes ma'am. I'm, uh, Brandon Weimer, I've been a resident of, uh, this fine county for coming up on ten years now, the lovely mother air force brought me here. My children are both in the Hope County school system, and that's, uh, on the map.
Pull it up.
Is that relation, yeah, so I'm assuming that's the Rockfish-Hope Elementary School down there?
Yes.
So where is it gonna be in relation to the school? Cause we know the traffic around that school at, uh, beginning and end of day is already horrific down there, we got cars lining up down Rockfish Road. And I just wanna make sure we ain't gonna run in any more traffic and danger for our students at that time.
So the school sits over here, and these are the mini storages, the long narrow track there. Mini storages don't have a lot of traffic, to be honest with you, as far as customers in and out of the day.
So it's that left one next to the?
Yeah, that whole, the long narrow stretch.
Okay, so down from the school?
Yeah.
More to the left?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay. That, that's my only concern, is adding more traffic or more congestion to that already very busy area during those times when children are coming in and out of school.
Right.
Mr. Sampson, what are the, with, I know that some of these storage areas, um, you have codes, people can access them any time of the day and things like that. Will this be accessible twenty-four seven, or is it?
No, our facilities are currently, right now, our facilities are a seven to seven. They're seven in the morning to seven in the evening.
Okay.
Um, customers can pay an additional fee and get twenty-four seven access. So far, you know, we have a little over a thousand of these units, and we probably have two or three percent that pay for the twenty-four seven access. Most people just accommodate, so they're basically a seven to seven thing in most areas. Some places, I have a friend of mine who has one in a neighboring town, Red Springs, they have, you know, the town has an ordinance that doesn't allow it to be opened at those certain times. So you can run into that, that's totally up to many communities, but ours are seven to seven.
And you don't see a lot of traffic around it?
No, the, mini storages are one of those things, you know, your weekends, Saturdays, people like to leave stuff on Saturday and do stuff like that. You can have, you can have pretty good traffic flow on the weekends, but your day-to-day, like school time, people are going, you know, going to work, or doing things like that. So you'll have a random car or two, I mean, they're not high-traffic areas, not like, say, you know, the strip center or.
Yeah.
If, if the state, um, I'm pretty sure you had to get a driveway permit, and the state, if they see a business that's gonna, they think that will accumulate a lot of traffic. Normally, they'll make you put in a turn lane and all those kind of things, but you aren't required to do any of that, right? Okay, so that lets you know that the traffic's, yeah, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else public hearing? If not, I have motion close public hearing?
So Lou.
Second?
Second.
Motion second close public hearing, all right, time to sit off it with I?
Aye.
Pose, I have it, thank you, wish of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve of the special use permit issue twenty-five dash three.
Second.
Second, and I like the fact you're gonna put those beautiful expensive hedges all around it, make it look real pretty, make it look real good for. Now, you're gonna get run out of here now. Your, your, your devotion, and said all in favor of I?
Aye.
Pose, I have it, thank you, sir. Now leave the, leave the best first county tonight, Hope County, alright. Tish number C is you, our land use plan?
Yes.
Is he here?
Mr. Vaughn Hanson?
He's here?
I don't, I didn't see him.
Uh, we hold it out, okay? Consent, A, A B one, two, three, four? Consent, the motion approved?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda number six, A, B, B one, two, three, and four.
The second? Second?
Second.
Motion second, all right, time to sit off it with I?
Aye.
Pose, I have it, I have it, thank you. Hope County Health Department, she's here tonight, that, Ms. Director?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the item I have before you tonight is the Health Department would like to create, uh, three internships for health education students out of our neighboring universities. Fayette State University and UNC Pembroke, they both have health education programs, and we have, um, um, some activities, some, some grant funds that we have, um, that we need to do activities in the schools, our Safe Routes to School program, we'd like to have two interns for that. And then, um, our Healthy Start program, we need to do some program with men of the families, and we would like to have a male health educator to help start those programs. And they'll be paid for completely out of the grants, and there's enough funding for it, um, for us to use the money to extend these programs in the community.
We know that.
So when our college kids come home, they gotta, they.
They could have a job, and a potential job, opportunity, and experience. Um, experience in the field, and also just acquaint them to public health, especially in a rural community like Hope County.
Right.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great program, uh, especially because of, of students being able to come, as Ms. Alina said, in working counties like Hope County, and see what that work is like, and the, the people that they'll be dealing with and helping, I think it helps encourage them to, to work in counties like Hope County and to give their services. So, uh, great job, Ms. Alina.
College, you're doing, who you think?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, the, uh, proposal for the, um, uh, internship program at the Health Department.
Second.
The motion second, all right, time to sit off it with I?
Aye.
Pose, I have it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alina.
Ask what she thinks, she should know what she thinks, made a motion, didn't she? Mrs. Andrew Jacobs coming?
Evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Commissioners, uh, tonight I'm coming to present to you the, uh, return on proposals we had for the twenty-five, twenty-six opioid services, uh, request for proposals. We had, uh, in total, four that came back, and, uh, if you'd like more details, we can obviously go, uh, into that, but I'm just gonna give you the brief synopsis of, uh, of what we have. We have, um, Tia Hart that came in, um, um, the strategic model for that was collaborative effort and research and formate, formation, uh, future initiatives. Um, that, uh, that program there, out of the points evaluation ranked, uh, second best, that is an NC, North Carolina, um, entity, as recognized up on the Secretary of State's website. We have, um, Endeavor, which, um, ranked the highest, but the problem I have with it is the staff person, um, they're out of, the problem didn't have, I didn't have the problem with it, that they're out of Texas, but they were asking two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the, uh, for the service to be provided over the course of the six-month, uh, term. Um, they had very robust product, but as far as I could tell, they didn't have any representation here already existed inside of Hope County. Um, and they would have to bring in all that infrastructure to just have a six-month program, we're talking about trying to get the rest of the year, that just doesn't seem plausible to me to be able to turn it up and get the, sort of feasibility on that one was fairly low. Um, we have, uh, Navara, uh, had difficulty finding stuff on this entity right here, didn't have anything really out of the Secretary of State's website. They had a couple of different strategic goals inside of there, and they, uh, were trying to do some early intervention collaborative, uh, research, um, and just really a litany in there. And again, they came in, uh, thank you at the bottom. Uh, the number one contender for what I felt to be, um, the most plausible, um, I may pronounce this wrong, Brainjustic, um, they have a early intervention model that focuses at, uh, being able to educate. They have a early intervention model that focuses at, uh, being able to educate youth in times of, uh, opioid awareness and, uh, just a, a, a pretty vast program when it comes to early intervention and deterrence. So, um, the, uh, grab my notes here. The current balance, um, available in the opioid fund is, uh, as of tonight, per finances, one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cent. To give you all a forecast for where we are going, uh, here in the next couple of years. FY twenty-seven is set for two hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-eight is a hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-nine is two seventy, thirty is two eighty, and thirty-one is again, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I'm sure this board here is well apprised of the various opioid funds that continue to come down. But I will tell you, outside of this main settlement, county manager and I have seen no more dollars come into Hope County. This is all we have been given, I think county manager worked two, two other separate, uh, opioid settlements that we're, uh, that we've joined, but no monies yet have came down for that.
So for the next six months, what have we allocated for this proposal?
That's up for the determination of the board.
I thought we had said before.
We did two hundred thousand.
I thought we said two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
To be spent.
To be spent.
For this proposal going into the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, two hundred thousand.
Are you asking for a motion tonight on, uh, one of these?
Y- yes sir.
Okay.
All right, can, are you finished, Mr.?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't wanna interrupt you. Um, I guess my question is, is that in the proposal that you ranked number one, did they have a dollar amount of what they were seeking?
Yes sir, they all have dollar amounts. No, the one that I ranked number one was a hundred and fifty, um, uh, and it said up to, so, uh, all of the, the submitters were advised it need to be prorated, just the time it takes us to get out the contracts and training and stuff like that.
Okay.
How much was Tia Heart's?
Yeah, that was one of my next questions.
Fifty-six thousand, which kinda led me to my next point, if we can, uh, uh, we can potentially serve two here, if that be the wish of the board.
That, that's my wish, for sure. Uh, we have two Hope County companies, uh, so Brain Justic and Tia Heart, uh, with Hope County reputations. I appreciate people from Texas wanting to, uh, get these dollars, but when you have people you know in the community, people who can stand before us and give, they can give a description of what they've done and be accountable to the, to these dollars, uh, that's what I'm gonna support one hundred percent, so. Make that motion. My, my question is, I know Brain Justic is up to one fifty, do, do we feel that we can approve both at the full allotments, which would be six thousand over?
Um, we would only give them the amount that they can get to for the six months, cause we're gonna end it at the end of the year. So the odds of them spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in six months, it wouldn't be that.
Right.
So we would give them.
So we could still give Tia Heart fifty-six?
Fifty-six, and we would only give them the amount.
That they use?
It would be a hundred and fifty, it would only be.
Because I think Brain Justic is a pour down, so we don't give them a check, that they do something and they, they pour down, they pour down the funds.
The first quarter is what we give them and after that is a reimbursable, they have to spend it before we give it to them.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I approve it, we approve Tia Heart and Brain Justic, uh, with the amounts already listed. A second?
Second.
Motion second, I had time to consider the question. All in favor of I? Pose, I have it, thank you Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, and just a word of efficiency, I would ask that the board entertain a motion to allow staff to amend the opioid resolution in state of North Carolina, to be able to have that submitted and brought back to the chairman at which time that it's ready to be signed and, uh, made into a resolution so we can file and move forward with these, uh, contracts.
Such motion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with that motion, just long as we run it by the legal department also. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all right time to sit on for the with I. Pose, I have it, thank you Andrew. Mr. Chairman, just, just for, uh, education, I know we have a lot of children here, uh, what, what we were just talking about is opioid settlement funds, uh, so, so young people especially, uh, as you know, they are. Don't worry Andrew. There, there are cer- certain drugs that people use, uh, for, for pain compliance and people began to get addicted to them. We call them opiates. Uh, there was a national settlement, uh, that sued the companies that create those opiates. And there was over, uh, billions of dollars that were sent out to local governments around the country. And so we're tasked with spending our share to do our best to help people who have a drug addiction. People who use drugs, misuse drugs and need help. Uh, and so we just approved funding, uh, to go to local companies that's gonna go out and help people who are suffering, uh, with drug addiction. There's a lot of people in our community who needs help, uh, you may know someone, uh, these funds are to help them, so. I know we went over it on a high level talking about money, but I just wanted to make sure, especially since we have young people here, that you understand what we just did. Let's run a call Andrew back, you tell our young folks what, what, what drugs are, if you're local.
Yes sir, so this, these funds are gonna be, uh, focused at getting in to the youth in the schools and getting to identify what these opiates are. I remember when I was a kid, drugs didn't look the same way they look now, they weren't as easily accessible. Many of your parents inside of the audience remember kind of the opioid crisis we went through in the nineties. It really seemed to target, uh, rural America and Hope County felt susceptible to that. So now these drug companies have been held accountable and they're putting these funds back into these local communities to hopefully make a difference. There is years and years of things that, uh, individuals' lives have been negatively, negatively impacted. Hopefully, we can make some positive change with the monies that are coming here, uh, and not only our youth, but in our communities as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. She has a question for me, okay? You got it, okay, okay. Thank you ma'am. Supers property clerk of the board to the board.
Thank you, uh, good evening, uh, this is an item asking for the approval of a resolution authorizing the advertisement of an offer to purchase certain property. Uh, the property is four, six, four, Alex Baker Road, parcel number six, nine, four, two, five, one, six, zero, one, zero, two, one. The total cost amount is four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, the bid offer amount is five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Okay.
Do we know the size, do we know the size of it, Shanita? Not really, it's, it's, if you don't, it's okay, I'll get it later, all right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go. Mr. Chairman, who do we authorize for? Second?
Second.
Motion second, we offer our supers property, all right time to sit on, all in favor of I? I propose, I have, Mr. Vice Chair, why Sandy Grove Middle School here?
Okay, it gives me pleasure, um, members of the board commissioners, to, I recognize, uh, some beautiful young ladies from Sandy Grove Middle School. I'm gonna have, uh, Coach Woodson come up, or as she come up, I wanna introduce a few people, starting with, uh, the principal of Sandy Grove Middle School, Dr. Bowden, he's present, stand up Dr. Bowden, so we know who you are.
I got two more to do.
Mr. Tanya Reed, school counselor, she's here. Charles Woodford, social worker from Sandy Grove. Miss Lopez Rojas, registrar. Uh, assistant coach, Antonio Sellers. Okay, great, and then we also have from the high school, uh, Antonio Covington, our athletic director. But I wanna recognize now Coach Woodson.
Who's the principal again?
Right there, that young man right there. The short guy in the back, the short guy in the back. Coach, go ahead Coach.
Right here sweetheart.
Uh, yeah.
You on cam, the camera up here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I bring the greetings from Sandy Grove Middle School. We are here to honor our girls cross-country team. They are the conference champs for their fourth year in a row.
Come on now. Hey, good evening.
Assistant coach, Antonio Sellers. The girls are amazing. I tell people all the time, I'd rather coach girls than young boys anyway, because they're way more disciplined and it's, let me get out there, let me get it done. I'm just getting real, but these young ladies, uh, from top to bottom, they have, like, we have young ladies like Ava Sunnis and Ava Warner who ran nationally last summer, we got Leila Southern who says, who everybody says, how is she the fastest person in the, in the county and how is she the best long distance runner in the county? We got Mia Hayes, we got.
She's a baby.
Mariah, we got Madison. All these amazing young ladies. That are doing stuff that we could never even think about as young kids. The opportunities, the education, they're locked in at all times and I just appreciate y'all for, um, acknowledging.
Well, you know what, I'm gonna tell you, we love our children now, this chairman would tell you that, we love our seniors and our students.
That's right.
And so anytime we find out that they're doing some amazing things and Coach Woodson, she reached out to us, I said, bring them so we can recognize them. You know, we wanna say to them now, while they're growing, they, they have the support of the county, we staying with them. And so when they leave here, they know that they had a county that, that supported them and love them. And so we, we can't do that in the shadows. We gotta bring them up, we gotta recognize, we gotta love on them, but we also gotta love on these parents, uh, for the job they've done. Let's get the parents a hand for the job they've done. Yes sir.
I think you have two of your school board members, they come up front too, we get a picture, school board members?
We wanna get, we wanna get a picture with them.
Come on, school board members.
But we also, so you know, the refreshment's out there, it's, it's for the girls, it's for everybody, but it's in honor of the, of the cross-country team. So we got y'all some cake and ice cream and some, uh, some, some.
That's why I just be watching y'all.
He named me up.
I know.
That's why they asked you quiet.
You tell me y'all, Frusman, I wanna come with you? Come on, come on Doc. That's my baby right here. Don't you look like, oh, definitely like.
Ignore him. She's trying.
Come on Doc. Come on, come, direct, come on. Somebody get you one of these pieces.
Doc, you can get about anywhere they'll see you.
Can you see her? Can you see her? See everybody? Hold, 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 don't move. Okay, Madison, you wanna say anything, Madison, on behalf of the team? You wanna say anything, come on, say something Madison. You don't wanna say nothing? Okay, all right. Who's Mia? Where's Mia at? Come on, say something on behalf of the team. Say it on behalf of the team, the girl, come on.
Y'all on TikTok.
No, they, they're gonna tell them, TikTok, they're ready to rock and roll now. Go ahead Mia, whatever you want to say, you say, thank you, whatever you wanna say.
Um, I'm just really tired of our girls getting it before we all.
We are too.
That's right. Thank y'all, thank y'all. Hang around for your cake and ice cream. Cake and ice cream.
How you doing? You doing all right?
Thank you my friend.
Thank you. It's a long one, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
All right folks, we get y'all in a little while.
One more, yeah, we got one more.
All right. Number, uh, recognition. Number eleven? Hey, number eleven, I'll send you one.
So, before I go to number eleven, I wanna just let the, the public know that anytime our children are doing anything in the school system, that y'all wanna be recognized, let us know. This, this board right here love our kids, we wanna recognize them every chance we can, so let us know what they're doing, so we can recognize them. Uh, at this time, we wanna recognize now, we recognize the kids, we wanna recognize a teacher who was recognized as the educator of excellence. She received that award, I'm gonna have her colleagues come up and present it to her, but y'all welcome Ms. Jasmine Emanuel from Upchurch Elementary School. Come on up, Ma Jasmine. I want y'all to stand. I want y'all to tell us what the award is for before Jasmine come up and, and speak a little bit. Yeah, this is, uh, uh, best in the school system. Tell us who you are first of all, okay?
Uh, my name is Nikia Gilchrist, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Upchurch Elementary School.
Okay.
Revanda Brown, uh, kindergarten, not kindergarten, third grade.
Third grade teacher, okay.
ELA social studies at Sterling. So the award for educator of excellence, this is a North Carolina educator, educator of excellence award and a state level recognition for individuals who provide outstanding service and make significant contributions to education of exceptional, exceptional children in North Carolina. This award is presented to the North Carolina State Board of Education and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction honors educators who are leaders in the field through innovative, dedicated service. This award is presented annually to, at the North Carolina Conference of Exceptional Children. The focus, um, I'm gonna let Ms. Brown read.
Focus, the award specifically recognizes excellence in the education of exceptional children, highlighting those who lead through service and contribution. On November twentieth, Jasmine Emanuel.
It's a good, it's a good day.
EC teacher at Upchurch Elementary School was honored at the seventy-fifth annual North Carolina State Exceptional Children's Conference as Hope County Schools Educator of Excellence. Each year, NCDPI recognizes one outstanding special education professional from every district who demonstrates exceptional service, leadership, and dedication to students with disabilities. Nominees are selected by their peers and district EC leaders, making this recognition especially meaningful.
All right. Mr. Emanuel, talk to us. Give us your whole man, I think he's got some Hollywood for you.
Uh, my name is Jasmine Hollywood.
I felt so.
I am a teacher at, a special education teacher at Upchurch Elementary School. Uh, I've been in education for ten years this year. I started from being a bus driver to a TA to now leading my own classroom.
Oh, yeah.
I know it's like to start from the bottom and build my way up.
Good.
Right.
Um, I work with these ladies in all capacities, from them, including my students. Students who don't get a broad, uh, opportunity all the time, who get overlooked because of their disabilities. But being able to be nominated and receive the award for Hope County, it continues to show me that I'm doing something right.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
What I would definitely say, everybody, just continue to support your school's special education department. It's not easy. It's not easy, and one thing I will say is that we have one of the biggest special education, uh, population here. We have students who can attend school, we have students who cannot, but they just need somebody to believe in them.
That's right.
Like pour life into them and keep just doing their thing. Showing love and grace.
Amen.
That's right.
Because in my classroom, one thing we say, my motto is, you're not your disability, so don't look at him as a disability, look at him as a person first, that's why.
Thank you, thank you, take a picture.
Get up one more time, Joe.
Yeah.
School board? Come on.
Walked with him for twenty years.
Congratulations to Hollywood. Where's Chris at? Come on Chris, please.
Oh, don't grab, wrist right there.
Oh, wrist right there, okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Tell me, I'd like to reach one off of.
I know.
Hey, what does he got for?
All right. Hey, you got that for?
That's it, for me.
All right. Mrs. Manager report, county manager report, you ready to teach?
Yeah, I have my utilities.
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready. I'm on up, Jane.
Good afternoon, McQueen.
So we could talk about a lot of different things, but we're gonna try to keep it as brief as possible. So what we're gonna talk about is additional water supply that we're working on at McKean area. What we've done is we've actually have test wells in place, we will start that after drilling process next Monday, the eighth of December. What we're trying to determine exactly how much water we can actually pull from that well. We're looking at anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty gallons per minute, this gives us somewhere around, uh, yield of about one point seven billion gallons per day if you run it for twelve hours. So those are, those are part of some of the things that we're doing. Also, we're actually looking at, um, constructing another well in the McKean area now that we have access Now that we have access and we have control of the site, we can actually start to permit and go to the state and get those done. So, that'll be the next part, the next part of the phase. And also, and also included in that phase, we're going to also look at the wells that are currently there. Because they've been there so long, it don't make this have been done. What we need to do is go and look at the screens in the wells, make sure that they actually will provide the amount of water that we need for that McKean area. So, that's kind of where we are. A part of that phase also is what we're going to do, is we've also looked in other areas for additional water. We had some plans in 2017 of a water treatment facility, and we're now going through the process of looking at those numbers and looking at a good spot or place. And based off the information that we've gathered, it looks like the Duffy area is going to probably be the best area. We're looking at putting in somewhere around a 6 million gallon per day water treatment facility with the capacity go up to possibly 10. That is what the plans are, but it all depends on how much yield we can get from the wells.
Okay. You're doing good, we're growing. Bring it to us, we drank it.
Thank you for your hard work. I know we've been difficult to work with, but we appreciate you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
If you bring it, get it underground, we drank it. Benny James.
Mr. Chairman, it's the same too, because I know James. James, he's finally said, I'm going to just make this statement, because James was in the meeting. Just to let, some of our developers are here tonight, and I know that they're concerned about our water and what we're doing. I shared a little bit of it with one of the developers, but, you know, we've also had a great, I would say, a great meeting with PWC here the other week, with their CEO and with the mayor Mitch Covington, and our utility board manager and Mr. James. And we're forming a team together from their side and our side to look at the needs that we have on the eastern side of the county, and that's something that is just in the infant stage. But I wanted the folks to know that we're, what we're really looking at is working the county from both sides. We're looking at working from the west and the east to try to help with this water situation that we have. And, you know, it takes time with infrastructure, but we're, we're going to move this along as quick as we can. And like I said, it was a very promising meeting.
Very good meeting.
And we want to continue with that. I just wanted the folks to know we're not just working on the western side, but we're also got some plans for the eastern side also.
Very good meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, James.
All right, Tish.
As the board knows, Hope County put in our own gas pumps. It was a project that we worked on for a while, and I just want to give you an update on how that's working out for the county. And I have Andrew here because it has been a group project with AV, emergency services, and myself to make that work. So, go ahead and give them the update so that they see where we're at since we are almost six months into this project.
Back again, really quick brief on this here, Hope County Fuel Point gear data analysis, next slide. This? All right. So, check a little bit about where we are at, just for what we're paying. So, prior to getting our own, our own fuel point, we were paying for 87 or regular, regular grade gasoline. When we moved over, we started purchasing 93. So, if you, right now, we're, we're actually a little bit lower than this right now. The prices have changed day to day, but we're typically in the 240 to 260 range for 93 octane fuel. Whereas, if you look on the open market right now, we're like 281 for regular. If we continue on moving in this, and very important point, buying in the bulk, we're buying in our average variance from day to day, we're within four to five cent. We haven't had any crazy runs. We've been very fortunate with the market. We've increased our capacity right now. So, we have 18,000 gallons of gasoline capacity and 6,000 of diesel. We've purchased about 140 gallons, and this is, this is the crazy part, running the numbers today, I had to check up again myself. We're saving about a dollar a gallon.
A dollar a gallon?
A dollar a gallon.
That's good saving.
The actual number today is a dollar and two cent.
A gallon?
Per gallon.
A saving.
Per gallon. So, right now, we've extended this out to, all county departments are on it. We have a couple of fire departments that use it as their primary source, and K-Fire EMS just recently came on. They're helping us move and diversify our portfolio for what we're offering. So, this equates to roughly, in the first five months of operation, equates to about $140,000 worth of savings.
$140,000?
$140,000 worth of savings. I ain't heard a word like that for around a while.
Keep talking.
If the scale continues based on what we're doing right now, we're looking to do about $235,000 this year in savings. And the remarkable piece to me is, we're putting 93 in there, and we're already 20 cent below 87 on, on a commercial market. So, we're already 20 cent below that, but we're putting a higher premium product in there for still a dollar less if we go to market to market on that. And diesel fuel is about the same thing. So, we're able to extend this tax base, and we can pass on a lot more to the taxpayers here at the county. There's two parts to it when we come to revenue generation of savings, though. So, the policy practice we've had is a 10%, service, and made this film there because we all know that, Chris probably more than most, having to replace stuff when people drive off with their pumps or whatever, the equipment like that, just making sure that we keep this site looking brand new and operating the way it should for Hope County. So, 10% to county departments, county fire departments, EMS, it's tacked on. That 10% revenue generation has done roughly $30,000 since July 1st, and if it's on scale, we're looking to do about $70,000 with that. And it's going to continue to grow as our program partners. We've had several fire departments to come on, and they love the savings, we love the savings. It's a secure facility, pretty centrally located, so they're able to take advantage of that. The biggest piece that I'll say right here, this is the end of my slide, at the current rate we're at now, which we know that it's going to continue to go as the county fleet grows and our partners grow, the fuel point will pay for itself in two and a half years.
Wow, good thinking.
That's good thinking.
Questions?
Oh, good job.
Maybe, Mr. Andrew, we can take this, Ms. Andrew, we can take this and put, we'll do that with a dollar pound.
I'm going up here doing the presentation, but Mr. Company, Department of AV, the management of getting this done, the management of getting this done, so I look forward to continue saving Hope County taxpayers.
So, you're saving money.
Thank you.
I love your singing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, thank you.
Very good.
And the, and the last thing, which is not always a good thing that I want us to take time in, we lost an employee on November 22nd in solid waste. Gideon Locklear, who's been with us since November 25. He went home on a Friday, and on Saturday, we lost him. So, he's been a dedicated, hard-working employee with us, and I just want us to take the time to know that Hope County has real dedicated employees that work with us. And sometimes they go home and they don't come back with us. So, I want to take that time for us to acknowledge that. And then, we have one more employee that retired on November 1st. And I got a call from his wife. He was really dear to me, and he was a director, Scotty Lucky. I got a call that we lost him today. And so, I want everyone to know that he was dedicated, he has been with me a long time, and he went home, and we lost him also this, this evening. So, that's a really hard one, when our employees retire and they go home, and then we lose them shortly after they go home.
Scotty was our animal shelter.
And I thought his wife nursing and I've known some kids.
So, if we can take that time for a moment of silence or...
Let's give a moment of silence for both of those, please. Two lives so well lived, thank you. All righty. We give the grace, and we ask our youth to go out and eat their ice cream and cake in fellowship, ask our adults, grown folks to stick around and support them. Mr. Solomon, this is your monthly invocation. Bless our food.
Okay. Let us pray. Lord, we come before you again for a wonderful night. We just thank you for allowing us to come together, Lord. We realize that when two of us are together, Lord, that we are in your name, doing what you want us to do. Lord, we are your servants, Lord. We're doing your will, once that you bless this food, bless it in a mighty way. Allow this food to be nursed before our bodies, Lord, in Jesus' name.